What do we do with that? Police fire. Some of these people aren't vested, I mean, aren't vetted. I don't know what their criminal history is. Eric's, you know, may have an increased demand. It's supposed to be sort of man camps. And we're fast working on our zoning ordinance to make sure where those places are allowed are quality. Not along 2725 and just what is a, I'll call it no man's land right now. But the impact on sewer water, our annexation plan where we're chomping to take over bigger pieces of property along our Ingleside boundary for strategy. Because if you don't know, and I've said this at a couple of meetings, cities have two major revenue sources. Your water sewer fund is the most lucrative for a city. Not only because it invests in more infrastructure, but because it helps pay and it's on our balance sheet as an asset. So, very important that we not only maintain it, but continue to expand it. So when you get people that say, "I need a street in front of me." Well, part of development is, if you build it and you need access to it, or you need access to it, you have to build it. And then you turn it over to the city for maintenance. Eighty-two hundred people should not pay for a small section of street that only you'll have access to. And the reason for that is because there are other demands on the system that we have to keep investing into. And so we look at the greater good overall. The council approved ten million dollars a year ago or so ago. We not only changed our financing rules a little bit ago to make sure we put $200,000 in reserves, but we improved our credit rating. So we were able to just basically refinance those bond dollars without having an impact on the tax base. That's important for you guys to know, because as you guys go for bonds, we want to make sure we don't have an impact. We are doing things like structuring the building codes, because the FEMA maps mean an increase in your insurance rate. Our practice of extending two-inch water lines means our ISO rating, our overall insurance rating, takes a dive, okay? We've amended our policy on water extensions, which is why we get beat up on some development rules. We've amended a lot of those things to be able to maintain stability in those areas. So as the rates go up, because the actuarial tables change, we want to combat it with, "Look, we're doing better, we're doing these things to combat it." I can't take away the windstorm, but what I can do is make sure that our building codes regulate enough, not overly regulate, but regulate enough so that our insurance tables kind of sustain the prices as stable. So, that's what council said, we're going to invest in ourselves first. We put a survey out, the folks said roads, parks, community. That's a typical water line, that's the HEB water line. Chunky stuff comes out of water, where's much of the sponges?
Yes, it does.
If you're at the end of the line, that's what comes out. Okay, that's, that's also a broken line, right? And if you can see, there's a section of PVC there, but the rest of that is clay. So, we're doing Highland and Johnson, Rhodes and Beasley, that's phase one and phase two. There's already water there, it's not adequate water at all. Water pressure, water quality, the problem. So we're coming in, we're doing water, sewer, road, and ditches. Our ditches, we don't have the capacity for underground drain along some of those sections. Good portions of the section, but it doesn't make sense to have underground and then new bits of ditches. 2725 is, is the killer. That is, there are sixteen industrial districts along 2725. Millions of dollars worth of property, and they paid the city $90,000 last year. That's bad for us and that's bad for you, because they're paying 20% of their tax value. Twenty percent. We're doing away with those industrial districts at the end of this year and looking to chew them up and swallow them back into the city. That is tax based for you guys as well. That is the worst thing that we could have ever done for ourselves. 1069, you know TechDOT is coming, they're looking to break ground in March. Our water line, Johnny with LND is the engineer working on that. We've completed our portion of the water line, but another portion of TechDOT is a grant that we're working on with the state in San Francisco, and I need a certain number of connections on that line, and we don't have that number yet. The state has given us an exception, they've given us a little bit more time, but it is strategic to protect that boundary. Every city has an ETJ, an extraterritorial jurisdiction. Ours is a one-mile ETJ based on our population. Ingleside has no more ETJ. There's nothing else for Ingleside to swallow up. But what they can do is, cities are granted what are called certificates of necessity, CCN. That is your water sewer boundary. I told you, water sewer is very lucrative. So what they'll do is they'll say, "You're not in my boundary, but guess what, Aransas Pass, you can't serve that area of 1069," and we can. They'll tell the residents to petition for de-annexation, come out of Aransas Pass and come into Ingleside. We don't want that to happen, obviously. So that's a very important corridor for us. So if we don't get the grants, what we're going to do is allocate the money anyway, I'm hoping. I'm saying that in advance to the council, I don't know. But it is very strategic for us. We did have a grant, we finished up on the Matlock, the big fire when I first got here. That was a, a product of poor development practices that were being handled. In our city forefathers, I'm going to tell you, the rules that were written in the 40s and 50s, I've told the council a hundred times, were great. Somewhere in the 60s and 70s, we took a left turn at Albuquerque and stopped following our own rules. So, great, thank you. And so, the camera's back on, Phil, aren't you? But now we have adequate water protection at Matlock, which means hydrants and those kinds of things. Which means, again, developable property, which means, again, taxable property for you guys. And then the 35 bypass. There's a developer who's putting a concrete reclamation. Ingram Ready makes us supposed to go there. I had another, DR Myers, looking for a place to put a building. I mean, the growth is happening whether we want to or not. Our only issue is to keep it quality, so that when we go to chew it up and annex it, it's not grandfathered trash already. Poor development that doesn't have the taxable sustainable value. That's just what happens when things leak and we don't fix it and you really can't see the main road. And there are hundreds of places like this around the town. And so, I know, we get beat up on roads all the time. We bought an asphalt zipper, Fred Rondo is frantically trying to buy the rest of the equipment, getting the correct id. And I know roads are important, but we've got to take not only an inventory of what we have, but our practice before was get on the zipper, go zip it, go make it drivable. Well, ask him what we did to him on his property. You don't know the appropriate slope, what's that ditch section supposed to be like, how wide is that road supposed to be, what is the adequate right of way? You can't just get on and zip it and do it. There's got to be, you know, orderly pattern of development. So, prioritize funded and then executed. We are at the point now that on the 16th, we'll be talking about the road conditions with the council, and then we'll be identifying priorities and figuring out how we're going to fund it, and then, or go execute it. So, the council has said the residents come first, we're not going to look anywhere, and so, the Harvard Development, which we'll touch on here in just a little bit, which is right there, was one of the reasons why we're putting the residents first. Working really hard on code enforcement, get those substandard structures off. We've created a building standards board that's doing six structures every six weeks or so, partnered with the chamber. If you let us do it voluntarily, you get a $500 credit toward that demolition. If we got to go after you, it's expensive, the city will do it, but it's expensive. Developing our standards, I hate this picture, where, where do you think that picture is? It's down the harbor, that light picture's nine and a year old. But we don't have appropriate standards. Every Friday, and I really should get the harbor maps, every Friday I'm sitting with the engineers and the developer, and we're creating standards from scratch. Literally from scratch, because we don't have standards.
That's some volatile fecal matter there.
The residents in our survey said the quality of life is absolutely important, so, and they said the library specifically in our parks. And that's why you see the library going through the revamp and the parks going through the revamp that they're going through. And the library is fast becoming the place to be in AP. Our librarian is a retired teacher of teachers, and she has, I believe, knocked it out of the park. And there's break ground at Veterans Memorial, we have opened it up. We are waiting for the monuments and the benches, and that's the last piece of Veterans Memorial. But, you know, those things don't happen without the support of the community telling us what we want to happen, and then therefore telling the council. But interestingly enough, when we dropped the GIS pin on where most of the kids were in the community, most are centered on the north side of town. That has the highest concentration of kids. So to not put a park there would really have been a heresy, and really a disservice to the community. And then partnering with the chamber and partnering with our small business, and business stepped up immediately when we talked about demolition. If you would put $500 toward it, we'd let you put your sign out with your business name. We didn't have, you know, ten people within the first day say, "Yes, we agree, we agree." And we used a lot of that money, and Republic has been a good partner in that as well. So again, putting our residents first. That's what everybody's talking about, right? That's the plan that's, that's the plan that's right behind you. It is, you know, the more we do the math every Friday, it is closer to a $700 million investment. And when I say residents first, the council did not want to put our bond rating or our debt at risk. And so we came up with a creative solution, the developer puts in all of the money and gets paid back at a certain rate. It's a one to 10 ratio. For every million he puts in, there's got to be 10 million in vertical. The estimated infrastructure, if it's all new, is about 50 million. We've looked at the bulkhead, we're inspecting, we're televising, the number's probably 25 to 30 by the time we're done. But that means, you know, 250, 300 has to be vertical before he even starts to get a dime back. And that doesn't put the rest of the city's credit rating at risk or our ability to borrow. He's got to create the value before we go and borrow enhanced it. So, just doing things like that to keep not only our credit rating, but our cash availability and our sound economic principles in place that helps attract people than then impacts you guys. So, the impacts to the school system. I'm going to bring up the, the school district map. You're here. Kemp's been in my office, he's seen the crazy map I've gone. He's seen the crazy map. So we're about to open up. Highland, Rhodes, Beasley. Right now, there is, I've told you, water sewer, that's part of that 10 million that are coming down. There's a development right here, Hogan Homes, 250, and then 100 homes planned, as soon as we open that up. Right now, we're looking at plans for a lift station, we need to identify location for a lift station, we're that far advanced. They're just waiting for that lift station location, which they want on their property. But if you don't know anything about sewer, it's got to flow downhill, and they can only flow to a certain point, you got to pump it and send it up. So we're looking for a lift station. Johnson, Rhodes, and Beasley will have better road, water, and sewer access. This is astronomical property for development. Right now, they're five acre tracts, beautiful property, and I expect it to develop like gangbusters.
Do you know what time is a property, more or less?
Their standard Hogan Home subdivisions are probably going to do a PUD, a plan unit development, which is 60 by 100 lot. And they're looking in the 150 to 170 price range, which is allegedly affordable. I don't know if that's true or not. But here, and here at Saunders and Johnson, we have Captain's Co subdivision, which is Gene Seaman, that's a 70-unit subdivision, also a PUD. We asked them to do something different on their drainage, but they're expecting to break ground within 30 days. That's seven units right here. At Z Berry, I'm sorry? Yeah, at Z Berry, finishing up Lisa Ann. Wherein, right here? Lisa Ann?
Oh. Oh, no. Highland.
Yeah, it's right here, right. Wherein, okay. Finishing off with Lisa Ann subdivision is a 20-unit subdivision. That is, going to be finished off by Bob Sells and Ronnie Box. And I know you know the name Ronnie Box, and so they're kind of speculating. Off of Ebert, which is another property, another area that's, you know, developing faster than we can put a road in, they're looking at multifamily, same group of investors. And they're Austrian, they're Chinese, they're Mexican, they're not our locals, but guess what? They came down here, they visited, they saw for a little while, and know this is the place to be, it really is. You can't afford it in Rockport anymore. Portland development is getting too difficult. Can't afford it in Port A. Ingleside is industry, so where else is there to go? And we don't have impact fees. Right across the high school, right across the Hogan Homes subdivision, we just approved Neil Anderson's PUD last council meeting? That's another 45 units that are coming. The harbor's supposed to have 710 unit equivalents, and those are between the 600 and 600,000 and a million dollar price range. And that's in, that's in your boundary. All of that's in your boundary. So, the other thing, we'll be taking to planning commission on the 16th, if you pull down the north side, and zoom in. On, on the north side of town, there are about 3,025-foot lots that today are not developable.
Okay, you're talking about, well, later.
Right behind, right behind signal. Yeah, this, this area specifically, Maddox, Lamont, Flora. There's about 3,000 of those lots there. There's a thousand on the other side of the city. We've been talking to planning commission about making those lots developable. And I'll show you what we're looking at. What is considered affordable housing is about the 100 and 140 price range, because that, that leaves your mortgage at about $1,000 to $1,100 a month. We would give, we would give the developers a floor plans. Believe it or not, those are 18 feet wide. They're 14, 1600 square feet, and you have six floor plans like that, that you can make work on a small lot. You articulate, those lots are 160 feet deep in most parts. You give them alley access, articulating the house, taking over the entire street right away, they give that illusion of space. But then all of a sudden, I have 3,000 houses on, online, and then 1,000 houses. There's another potential area that I had picked up, right here, right, literally, right behind City Hall. I don't know if that word, document's going to pick it up. That's, that's right here. That's literally right here at our back door. Each one of those lots is 64. So, yeah? 120, 240? You can see where it adds up really quickly. Those are the lots that are going to bring the students in. 710 unit equivalents is great money to come in. Most of those are second homes for people, they're not bringing in their children. Those homes are bringing their children. So, we are working on something that maybe put 4,000 rooftops on the ground in a very short period of time. And I don't know if you guys are prepared. We're not prepared. I'm having to look at the sanitary sewer impact to the harbor, and all of a sudden on Friday, we were talking about, well, he's going to have to bring all the way to the Blossom Lift Station, and we're going to have to rehab the lift station. And then I went, "Holy crap! There's 3,000 other houses that need to dump into the Blossom Lift Station now." And then we started talking about water. Holy crap! That means an elevated tank over there, that means I need to go back to the water district and get the other elevated tank in Ingleside to do that. Those are the kinds of discussions we're having at our, on our side of the house. Trying to bring it here, but impact to the planning that you guys are having every day on crap if they bring it. If they build it and they come, what are we going to do once they get here? And, and so that's really what this meeting was about, not just tell you what we're working on, but really, I don't have a way to stop it. Those, those people are coming. They're taking up hotel space, they're taking up apartment space, you know? TPCO has rented entire apartment complexes in Portland. The HEB in Portland is putting a Chinese food section in their HEB. Okay? That's all around us. And TPCO is only on building number three, and there's supposed to be 16 buildings, y'all. Chenier got their permit over the last 30 days, okay? Those are very, very good paying jobs, very good paying jobs. When I go into town, or Megan's going to school in the morning, I say, "Man, what's the traffic jam?" It's not, it's cars coming to work. I want them to not have to cross the bridge, I want them to stay here. But what does that do to us? What does that do? The impact to the school system, the impact to our roads, our infrastructure, all of that is absolutely critical to how we plan. And so, right now, our zoning ordinance says, if somebody builds more than 20 acres, we get to exact some property. We get to say, "I want a certain percentage of property," or "I want money for parks." I don't want small park at parks in neighborhood. One, our Parks Director will tell you, "She'll kill me," because they're hard to maintain, right? I want money for the regional park, community park, or some of our other larger parks. But we need to write something in that says, "A developer who develops more than 25 acres must exact for the school district." I want you guys at the table, because I don't know where you want those, I don't know where you want the schools. I don't know what the plan is for future construction of the schools. We need to know that so that we go to bat for you when we're at the table. That is a perfectly legal exaction, cities do it all the time. We haven't, we haven't done it here. I don't know how much property you're land banking, if there's a good swap that has to take place? Mark's shaking his head, "No, you're not land banking." You need to land bank, y'all. Do you know what land banking is? You need to take a look at strategy, like, if I'm telling you we're extending to Highland and Johnson, y'all need to be looking right now, and if you have something on the tax rules where people have a pageant, go take it. Go take it and bank it away. Show it as an asset on your balance sheet, bank it away, because you may need it in the future. It's perfectly legal to do, but you need to be thinking strategy ahead. We don't want to land bank, we keep turning it over on the tax rules, we want people to build on it. And so every council meeting just about, there's some line barter properties that are turning over. And that's a good thing, we just want to make sure you guys are included in the loop. And then the other thing is, Eric has gone to bat with TechDOT and your transportation person. We need to make sure that when we're setting the street grids in the subdivision, the connectivity is there, the sidewalk and safe school initiative is being followed, that, you know, your transportation guy is okay with the street layout, you guys are okay with the street layout. I mean, there's a lot of things that we need to be partnered with that we're not right now. So, it's your turn, I want to know what you guys need to know.
But we're hoping this evening, too, this is just our communication, open the call between all of us. We definitely want to get this, this is a total good round of practice. What we'll do, I'll stand up.
You're tall enough, take up the whole camera now.
We stand back, so it's easy. We're looking to welcome on next school year, so that's the 15, 16 school year with the election, firmly in bed. But to provide the school district enough time to really put plans together, really be involved, and see what we can do as a community to, to build schools for our kids. What school we're looking at is either the Fall or the Keebler Elementary Site, and that's probably what we're building. And that's only because we're a landlot, and usually school districts, you know, over areas have, you know, 14 acres here, 28 acres.
They're land banks.
We don't, okay? What we have basically is where our property, what, what buildings, you know, the old admin building is our property. Old Walton Noble, our property. Where the high school sits, our property. John Marshall sits, our property. Falcon Keebler sits, our property. That's it. So if we build a new elementary school, that means we have to tear down one to erect a new one, okay? We would love to, uh, land bank, a lot of times with line barter, they do have properties on the road, or not on the road, but they're not large enough to build an elementary in one specific area. It's not like they have two acres, and, you know, we could probably, you know, buy five acres and then add on later with another five acres, and add on later with another five acres, and we'll have like a 15-acre block. But again, that's planning, so what we're going to do, and know what's coming is coming quickly, we just want to get the ball rolling. If we get the ball rolling in the right direction with an elementary school, and then we can add on as we go along, but we'll leave that up to voters. You know, because it's your tax dollars, you know, it's your tax dollars who have to support us. It's your tax dollars who have to support these young minds. That's what we're expecting. Now, we hate it when families come in and look for a place to live, and they consider Aransas Pass, and then look at our schools and decide, you know, England has the better looking elementary school, so therefore we're going to resign in Rockport. Or Rockport has the better, you know, looking elementary school, so therefore we're going to resign in Rockport, and then we're out, we're left out of the home. Not that our educational programs are horrible, or better, or worse than theirs, but a lot of times we don't get that second look, we don't get that second chance. You know, they say all the time, first impressions, it'll go a very long way. Well, when they roll past our, our elementary schools, you know, yes, they're, they're in solid working condition, but they're just not really attractive to the opt. Again, when they're built in the 50s and 60s, that's different, different time, you know? But as far as updating facilities, we're not there yet. So that's what we've been looking for. So, I mean, if we come across that property to where we can stack away five acres here and five acres, but they're adjourned to parks, that's what we'll do. So, that's what we're looking for. So, you hear about it, if you, you know, you know Facebook, and they talk about possibly a bond, we're going to be seeking a bond, because our, our community and our community is up. Very fair?
That's clear.
All right.
Do y'all have any other comments on the growth part, because we got a training and involvement part we're going to touch on. And, and Mark, I really want to work with you, because we can amend our zoning ordinance to add the school district as a component. If we're going to, if we're going to take out the park dedication, perhaps there's a, there's a school dedication that's required, something like that. The flip side to that is they're going to be looking for some kind of participation if we're going to give a break on the building permit or something like that. And, and I know, and I know for a fact that Aransas Pass ISD hasn't typically participated on the economic development side, but I think it's because you guys really haven't been approached with what the benefit is. I think that, because GP ISD has, and Ingleside ISD has participated in some of the economic development packages that have been offered to bring industry in. We haven't, and I'm not, we're not so much industry-driven, but we are going to be rooftop-driven, and rooftops breed the commercial. The commercial strip centers, the Chick-fil-A's that Philip want will not come in, would not come in without those rooftops. And so, and, and those rooftop numbers are, are, like I said, they're going to climb very, very quickly. And we will exact some things from the developers to make sure our infrastructure is maintained, but I want to make sure the locations and the things that we're doing have an appropriate land, you know, dedication amount set aside in order for the school to do what it needs to do.
I have a question. Um, the thing that you're looking at, 1060 is possible, so how long do you think it's going to go? If we're looking at possibly, how long do you think the community is going to look for?
Well, if, if, if we can give Hogan a for sure location on the lift station, they had, they only had a, a small window to, to commit. Seaman Edition, the Bob Sells, all of the other ones are already breaking ground. As a matter of fact, Seaman will break ground in the next 30 days, Hogan will break down, break ground in the next 45 days, Harbor's breaking ground in August. So, I mean, it's a, it's a relatively short time period.
What do you think about, if the bond passes, probably another eight to 12 months it's going to break ground in, and then about two years after?
Yeah. Because you'll, yeah, you'll need some planning, and we'll need to make sure that you have adequate road capacity and things like that.
That, you know, that's a capacity, you know? One of our biggest, you know, issues are the winter taxes, the people coming with their $700,000 homes, you know? They're going to pay additional taxes, you know? Plus they don't have any kids in the system.
Yeah.
And if you're watching, you have to pay taxes or additional taxes. So, that's going to be, that's what we moved that year to, to campaign and advertise and build our PR with them, to let them know that, you know, it's not just for the community of the world's past, it's for the generation, if this generation is going to take over, you know, please help us, support us, and make sure that we create those previous laws.
But Mark, didn't you, didn't you say you guys are not thinking about taking on additional debt, so there would be no, no, no increase to the tax rate?
Yeah, we're looking, um, as I plan out more, there may be a little bit, but hopefully not too much to where it would hurt the benefit of that.
Yeah.
So, we're going to check every avenue.
I wonder how many of those, for a family, have a home that actually belongs to one of their school. Because you have to give them all the money, and then you're taking them back to the school.
We'll see.
You know, because you talk about the winter taxes, I thought it was because, because they all broke through in the area. And, 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 uh, our, our population, you know, you know, that's what we're looking for. And I think, please.
In my, in my research, uh, one of the issues with the last, uh, payment that particular entity, uh, it was, uh, understanding.
Resounding no. And, and that brings us to, to the educational training piece, because I will tell you, when I first got here in Ontario, I'll tell you, we had a heated conversation one day at MDD. With all of that industry coming, making sure our curriculum matches that. And I don't know how strong you guys have looked at that, I don't know how you research what's coming and what the needs are to industry, and I know we haven't helped. And I know we have a healthcare program, and I know we're turning out CNAs that eventually become RNs, and, and I'd be interested to find out, but one of the discussions I had was, if we're turning out CNAs that are making eight to ten dollars an hour, and a joint household is barely going to be able to afford the one forty, one fifty, is that really what we want to be when we grow up? Was that curriculum okay back in two thousand or nineteen ninety? And is that curriculum appropriate today? And, you know, the new house bill that just passed? Yeah, um, you know, how does that impact us? And I will tell you, all three times that I was in Austin, the superintendent and GP was there and they knew him by name. And he was there pushing, and he was testifying in committee, and he was there and GP was known. And again, GP has participated in those incentive packages. I want to make sure, if I'm going to Austin, I'm going to bring him along. Because, you know what, I, I work the room, but a lot of those people I know from my prior life. And I want to make sure we're putting our best foot forward. And I want to make sure that it's not just GP in the room being recognized, it's AP. Because you know what, damn it, we're prettier. I think we're prettier, we're not developing the ball yet, but we're going to be, we really are going to be. And so, a lot of the lobbying and things, somebody said, well, you need, you need to get a professional lobbyist. No, we don't. We just need to make sure we're up there at the time that we need to be up there. Whether it's testifying before committee, whether it's going out to make sure we shake hands. But, you know, I, I don't know what the house bill impact has, because I'm not on your side of the fence in terms of industry, but really, really taking a coordinated look and working with Voltsy, TPCO, and Shanier, and, you know, Iron Horse, and everybody that's coming along our corridor, and making sure our curriculum matches. Um, the hospital is bringing over a lot of people, and I will tell you, up in Austin this past week, one of the discussions is creation of a hospital district from Aransas County on, okay? That's going to negatively impact you guys when you go for a bond, because if that hospital district passes, everybody on our Aransas side of the border is about fourteen cents for a hundred dollars. If you think about it, the Rockport tax rate is thirty-eight cents, okay? That's, that's a big chunk. But they're looking to have, you know the problems they're having with their ambulance service? They're looking to have dedicated ambulance service, they're looking to have an ER because of the demographic, they're looking to have a hospital. As opposed to partnering with us, which brings us to our second conversation, as opposed to partnering with us. So my conversations with Dr. Ready and the hospital are, huh, I'm out, because Dr. Ready and that group's already been over there. Randall, you've already been over there. You haven't said anything.
And I was in San Francisco today.
You haven't said anything, see? And, and here's a major player in the room that knows information, that hasn't shared it, and it's going to impact you guys negatively, absolutely negatively. Fourteen cents is a lot of money. I had the, the city councilman from Rockport talk about the tolerance level for people. Is it thirty cents, is it twenty cents, is it fifteen cents?
We're meeting with consultants, we, and, uh, I, there is going to be some participation. I'm not sure if, if we're going to do the district, or if there will be, uh, we are going to have some, uh, we're going to have partnerships to, to, to county and state.
You know what partnership means? You know what partnership means? You know what partnership means? That's not a bad thing, a hospital district is not a bad thing. It would be an emergency services district, not just a hospital district. However, it is another taxing entity in the pocket. And our residents will only have a certain tolerance level. So their consultant is fixing to start in two months, to start the work. So they're starting in two months, in about a year's time, they'll have information. Those are things we need to be thinking about. Um, and that brings us to the next piece about partnerships is, when I first got here, I said, okay, who are our friends? You don't have any friends, go make friends. Wait, we do have friends. We do have friends, and we really, th- these two groups, really, the biggest taxing entities. Um, and the county is, the counties are friends, for the most part, the counties are friends. Um, we've got some work to do, we've got some work to do on sharing information. And, you know, I need to know what's the best way to share that information with you guys. I have forgotten the school board agenda, and honestly, we have, we haven't been to your side of the fence to the school board. And we need to make a concerted effort to do that. Because I can't attract a developer if they have this perception that the school is bad or the curriculum is bad, or the test scores are bad. I mean, Mark, for the first time told us those test scores that are published is because you pay somebody to make sure they're, you know, published properly. Well, that's kind of been like that, so we hadn't paid the uni code in how long have you been on? Years. We hadn't kept our own, I mean, we knew our ordinance is inside, but when we published them to the world, we published them every few years or, you know, so when the outside world is looking in, we're still looking antiquated. It's just little things that make a big difference in the entire world. And so, um, making sure that we spread the right word. Because when I go armed to battle with the developers, whomever I'm talking to, I want to make sure I'm spreading correct information, absolutely correct information. When I talk to some and they say, oh, your test scores and blah, 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 I go, wait. So we have a program with Inglewood, and then we have a program with GP, and our kids do this, that, and the other. Great, we didn't know that, that's something to take back to the potential investor. That's the kind of things we want to be able to cheer on, because that partnership benefits my ability to go out and attract people. We go to the Builders Association meeting every month. As a matter of fact, this is Sunday instead. Um, and part of my job there is to, you know, smile and dial and go, we're taking a lunch in AP. Come over, come see how great we are. I want to make sure I can sell the school too. The last bullet there is, um, involvement. Lil is not here tonight, but we hired a, um, teacher of teachers. A retired teacher of teachers from Corpus Christi is our librarian. Um, and in six months has done fantastic work at this, at the library. And I want her to be our liaison with the school, because she speaks her language. They spoke test scores the first day they met, and I was left out in the cold because I didn't understand the acronyms they were using, which is okay, I excuse myself for the meeting. But, you know, that's a stacked resource available to you guys. We reduced our employment requirement last year because we couldn't attract enough employees because they were all going to the oil field. And we said a GED not required, we'll train you and help you get your GED. So she's put some GED training, she's put, um, language training, resume building, all kinds of stuff in the library. And then if there are books or curriculum pieces that you guys need that we're able to get at a better price or a better economy, or we can get the software, or whatever it is we need to do, we're willing to do, we're willing to do that, because that library is really an absolute gem to this community. I see the kids holding hands walking, you know, just to Mr. Kippy's place. But then I don't, you know, the, the drop off stops right there, it's either the really young or the older generation that are using the library. Here lately, she's had to kick out some teams with the truancy issue, which, I, like I told her, I said, I'd rather them hang out at the library than at the park, you know, on meth or some crazy thing that Eric's going to have to deal with. But, you know, at the same time, they really should be in school, right? And I don't know what that policy is, and they talked about that today, but I, I want to offer her as a resource. And she's meant to be leading our Rotary stuff, our, um, E, our early act first night program. Um, and extending that, but it's, it's really more than that, because she is a teacher of teachers, and she does so well with, um, talking to people one-on-one. And, you know, when the kids are there, she gets down on her knees on their level kind of thing. And so that's, that's an important resource we need to offer, because our employees are now coming to us without a GED and we're having to train them. And, and that's not a bad thing, because I, I tell everybody, I'd rather hire the attitude than the skill, because I can train the skill, I can't train the attitude. But still, it's, it's investing in the community and what the long-term impact is for that. And then the other piece is student organizations, we're going to start, there's an Adopt a Spot campaign that beautify Aransas Pass, is where Keebler and Spess Beautiful is working with us on. Um, Veterans Memorial, we need a student organization to take care of. There's all kinds of things to do in terms of community involvement, and I want to make sure our kids stay involved so that they grow to love this place as much as Megan's come to love it in the two years we've seen it. You know, I want to see more kids at the, you know, the beach cleanups that Eric and Robert Breaker lead. I want to see more kids at the parks and things like that, and making sure that we get the appropriate word out on doing those projects. I am going to teach a civics class all week, I think next week or the week after. That's good, that's good. I teach civics every day, Megan teaches, Megan can teach the class already. But, um, those, those are the sort of fifty thousand foot level things that we kind of had on our mind as, you know, how we can work and extend that all over branch and make sure that we're all having the same conversation at the table, so they're not, we're not working in opposition. And I think part of the bond failure last time was sort of that opposition. And I'll be the first to tell you, I can't go to bat if you can't attract the students. I can't, I'm, I'm going into battle without bullets. And I can beat the hell out of you with a gun, but I still, I'm only going to beat, you know, a number of people.
Just so everyone knows, you know, one of our major focuses this year of, you know, student achievement. We want to lay down what's going on, I have to do, uh, as far as, you know, teachers, instruction, and curriculum, uh, assessment. So we want to make sure that we lay down what we can, we can even to, even think about bonds, but, you know, my, uh, disposition was, it's going to be hard to sell the holders of new schools if the, the education piece is not there. You know, if it's the same old crappy education piece, you know, that hasn't had the material pass, it's going to be very difficult to resell that, or repackage it and try to resell it. So if we lay the foundation and we provide that education piece and make it as solid as possible as a law, and I think everyone else on the outside can see that, uh, we're just as good and not better than Rockport. We're just as good and not better than Rockport, whether you put, or bring your focus. We're setting, we're moving on, you know, what we have to offer, uh, you know, quietness, peacefulness, sometimes, uh, but essence, uh, physical, you know, and I want to make sure that the school plays a major role in that, and making sure that I'm able to educate, that's, that's the bottom line. If we can do that well, I think everything else is important.
Are you guys, um, looking at the curriculum, at what industry needs?
Well, that's, that's, that's a different part, because that's CTE. So what they're doing, they're doing, uh, surveys all the time beside what industry needs. So, and right now, there's a different piece of the, the, uh, nerve certification section that you're focusing on, because that's what industry is saying. Another piece is.
Who's on that, who's on that community?
Um, it's taken up a whole area. It was put out by Chris Johnson, who's, especially, you know, she's also on a CTE person. So she does that survey. Uh, and she's into the roots with either side of the board, for, for, uh, Aransas County or Rockport, because they all seem to be scared. So we all surveyed those parents, we all surveyed those businesses to decide what they believe, what they need. Uh, the other part to that is the, uh, pharmacy piece. And I'm not sure if we're moving in a pharmacy tech or pharmacy assistant. There's a really difference in the two, but that's what we're looking at now to add here, because again, that's what surveys and, and business is setting.
So when, when she does that survey, who gets the results?
Oh, she has them, yeah.
No, I know, but she shares it with the school board, or is there a board, is there a team, is there a?
That's what we're asking. Let's go ahead and review the program as, as we.
We have the healthcare program, of course, but we also started STEM program too, which is.
Engineering?
Science, technology, engineering, and math, which also is also a great program.
And, you see, that's, that's important for me to know, because.
It's coming up around us.
Yeah, um, Shanier might have, you know, six thousand jobs in the beginning, but at the end, they'll only probably be three hundred jobs, and they're all engineering type jobs. And so, you know, if we're going to capture, but they're seventy and eighty thousand dollar a year jobs to start with. So if that's a program that we have, that's important that we make sure Sue and the folks at Shanier know that, hey, go look to AP High School for some of your internships or something like that, because those are, you know, those are the folks who are going to be graduating. Moody High School, a Corpus of STEM program had, they started little. We started a, when I left there, we had started the science and health school. And, um, the engineering piece has taken off like a rocket. They're doing robotics engineering, all kinds of good, good, good stuff there. And their demographic is much like ours, a lot of them are below poverty level, a lot of them are on free lunch. But you know what, those kids are literally hungry. They come from nothing, they know they don't want to stay like that, and so there is an incentive to succeed. And anything we can do to help, whether that means they come and intern here, is we just hired an engineer at Public Works over there. Um, it's from Lando or Public Works, or anything that we can do to make sure that they can stay that, whether it's giving them a project, letting them work on a road section, a bridge cross section, a culvert, you know, those kinds of things, that's, that's the kind of stuff I want to be able to go sell to industry and say, hey, we have that in our high school, did you know that?
Absolutely, get them career ready, whatever path they choose, whether it's, um, military.
That's what they've done, folks, uh, ladies, Chris and Mary, they brought my attention, is they started a program with TT last year before the Boston's technology, and then they went to the local colleges, come in from Boston, to help upgrade their technology, of course, but now that they've gone out, that they're lacking behind. Of course, the TT here was actually the best, and the community dropped here, they're pushing so hard. So when people come out, they're prepared to really go to work. And that's one of the conversations I do with, um, both of you, better ourselves, and, you know, local.
See, and, and those are, those are the conversations with industry that I'm telling you I want to have, if there's a need. And, um, it's not being filled or maybe not adequately filled, because GP just built that, the welding school, which, you know, Jim, Randy, and I were in a room and we're going, you're, you're speaking, someone, you know. Believe me, we had like arm wrestle fights, the city managers, all five of us, on this side of the, the bridge. But because one community shouldn't take from the other, we're supposed to be working in concert as a regional economy. GP has astronomical growth, all of that is in their boundary. So the GP's school district is supposed to be giving a lot of money back to the state. But they've also come up with a marketing campaign, they're marketing to our students, Port A students, Rockport students to come. And you're the parents, you're right, the parents see a pretty school, where are they going to send their kids? A pretty school, or are they going to try to locate the other area? And so, you know, if, I need to open some of those dialogues with industry, I am more than willing to help you do that.
One of the things we do have, we do have an awesome, uh, basketball team.
You do, you do, absolutely.
I would love to see really, uh, you know, we're talking about going together. And I'm involved with the city, I'm involved with the chamber, I'm involved with the school. And I don't see that unity there, okay? So we need y'all's support also. Matter of fact, I was at the chamber today earlier, and, and I, I was talking to one of the ladies there and, and, and describing that, that we're in a playoff, and oh, I didn't know that, uh. So we, we said, we need to unite in those areas, supporting one another, very important.
When we, when we were park planning, honest to God, I, you know, Megan doesn't go to school here and shouldn't, I bl- blurted now, so I really didn't play basketball anymore, but once somebody brought up, we're so great in basketball, why didn't y'all plan a basketball pavilion? And the light went off, ding, you're right, why didn't we? So guess what, we went back to the driving board and we're putting a basketball pavilion out there. Because the kids only have, you know, Terry told me, you got to come in early, and there's like three shifts, and da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Well, you know what, that's probably, that can offset some of that, but, you know, I, we, we just, honest to God, didn't even. No, I, I think they knew, we just, it didn't.
If there's anything else, the guys got to change the life of.
Well, I was the dimmest bulb in the tanning bed, not knowing what's going on. Look, I will tell you, Megan's school is not known for its athletics, they're known for their academics.
Actually, we did go to playoffs for volleyball.
Oh, she plays volleyball, my bad.
But if you mention football, that's not the.
But our academic decathlon team goes to state regularly, so.
I do want to mention this to everybody here, don't get so, uh, like, central basketball door, a little, I can see, or make council meeting of appreciation of what they've done, obviously, because it's a team of effort, the community supported. And there are future, nobody expected them to be so, they're doing so well, they're getting the place of their own model.
They're doing so well, it's a game of places, you know?
I think we did, didn't we? We did something for another team.
I know, we did it for the basketball.
Oh, we did it for them. It's already been here?
No, it's just a small thing, it's amazing.
I need to know that those, those things, that those accomplishments impact everyone, and everyone recognizes.
It puts Aransas Pass on a particular vice. And you see boys and girls united, you know, it's, it's a playing pool for everybody.
Therefore, I'm reporting for sixteen months.
Same day as yours.
I think that's the same probably as last time with the ball bit.
The sixteenth of March is your, your next meeting. What time does your board meeting start? We can do the presentation at the end of the council meeting, to give them a chance to go there first, and then come here.
All right.
Yes. Is there anything else that we can be doing better, that we're not? You know, I know Mark and I have speed conversations with the limited time, the limited amount of time we both have in the schedules, but, you know, I want you to know, we are talking, even though it's, he's overwhelmed sometimes when he walks in and sees the map and all the writing. And I'm overwhelmed when I look at everything he's got on his wall and scores, and I have no idea what any of that means.
Well, we'll at least keep our, up our dialogue, so. And also, too, we'll be trying to put a feature in at least, at least once a month, related to school activities. If you have a...
Well, we have citizens comments.
For us now, in our citizens, if there's any questions or any statements...
I have a question. Does the school district not have enough money to build a new school without bond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would need probably, you would need ten, twelve million dollars to build a new elementary school. We don't have that for our conference.
Ma'am, what's your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm Carrie Scruggs.
Oh, thank you.
Six twenty Johnson Avenue. Because it is imperative that we have an elementary school. And it will bring people in, and it will bring families in. They do look at the prettiness of this school before they look at the curriculum.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. But it is true. And with all the, the industry that's coming in, that they're talking about, and the House is saying, though, it's imperative that we have a new school.
Well, if you all support it, so.
There you go. Most of us support the laws of the country.
They didn't get up early that day, and they, and then they went shopping, and got busy, and then the polls closed. That's, that's typically what I heard up and down Walmart.
Then realize one vote means a lot. And a lot of people also realize, a lot of that is people alive. That for us, it has experience to be able to, to, to...
Yeah. We're really pushing the civics, the, the involvement with the school and the class. And when I go, I'm, that's gonna be one thing that I push, remind your parents to go out and vote, it is a right, it is important. And all of the good stuff that happens in this nation happens at the local level. We impact more, that's why, you know, that's why I'm here at the local level, and I, I could be anywhere. But here is where I make a difference every day. Each one of us makes a difference every day. And so, the kids need to understand that, you know, all of those actions, that good reaction, not the negative, but the good reaction that can come, really helps build us from within, and makes us stronger as a community, and a place they can come back to and call home.
Well, actually, hopefully, it's, I'm gonna be downed and coming up, that it, it'll help us to bring some of our importers, importees, working in the city, in the schools, in the area, you know, in nonprofit organizations, a lot of those are, that are leaving the community, are majority are outside people, you know? And we need the housing, and that's one of the problems, is that housing, so, so being able to, to bring in essentially the high-paying jobs, you know, like Eric, or, well, you see, over there, you know, we like...
Please, we're going into the present, we're gonna...
Help us down the road also, that we have our employees living in our community.
Yeah. That's, that's, this hundred and forty thousand, the, these homes right here, you know, the, the floor funds that we've given stuff are affordable and, and smart green, so the electric bills are low. That's about a thousand thirty-four house payment, and that's loaded with our tax rate, everybody's tax rate, our school tax rate, city tax rate, the county's, and average of the county's tax rate. So, that's about a thousand dollars for a three-bedroom, two-bath home. That's about what folks are paying in apartments.
Those are too small? The ones that are all built here are a little too small for the size family, and catering, and...
What is this, sixteen hundred? Sixteen hundred?
Two hundred square foot smaller than what...
What you have right now? So, Eric needs a bigger house. Buy two lots.
Well, that's, that's a...
Buy, buy two lots next to each other, you build two of them, and put the kids in one, and you put...
No, that's an idea.
So, a- anyway, this, it, it hasn't fallen on deaf ears about either living local or nearby, because I, we're still a regional. But the, what people can afford, what people can afford is fast becoming out of reach. And so, we're pushing people into apartments and things. That's why I tell you, the development codes in Portland, and I'm, you know, Randy and I are good friends, his council, he's got a good council, they have chosen to have a particular housing stock. And it's expensive to build. And so, they won't have Hogan Home subdivisions in Portland anymore. That, that, they're considering that the slums of the future. They have stated they want a particular house, twenty-five hundred square feet minimum footprint. That's a large house, okay? Lot sizes that are very large. That would be out of reach for our demographic. There's already lots that are platted there that we can turn into affordable housing. And you, we have to put in development control, so it doesn't become a slum of the future, because higher densities do promote, you know, higher crime and those kinds of things, people living close to each other. But that's why taking advantage of all the street right-of-way, taking advantage of the alleys and the lot divises is, is important. And we can do it with appropriate planning and standards. It's just, again, are we ready? Because if you're gonna pull that trigger, and all of a sudden rooftops come out, then you guys gotta go rent portable buildings.
I think you decided.
Let me show everybody, it really needs, yeah. It really needs.
Well, just go rent portable buildings now. Let me store stuff, because man, I'm out of room everywhere. I am out of room everywhere. But we really are trying to put our best foot forward. I mean, the water tower you see is probably the last piece of our tanks that is going over, and you'll see the netting through it. That tower kills me, because it, it just reminds me of the neglect we've had on our infrastructure for a long, long time here. We can't build it if, you know, what I call the unsexy piece isn't stable. Isn't stable. And our unsexy piece right now isn't stable. And we're working hard to stabilize it, and it's gonna take us some time and some money. Not as much time and money as you guys think, but it is taking us some time. But I think, for me visually, once that water tower is completed, it gives me a mental impression that we're moving toward improving the entire city. No more is that derelict sign coming into AP, the rendition of AP anymore. It's gonna have your new logo on it, the logo you guys have voted on. There's your logo up there, gotta tell you, hey, looks mangy already from the painting. But we've also got a maintenance program in place too, where the tank will be refinished every five years. It's not gonna get to that state anymore. Those are just little things that people pay attention to. Is it pretty when you drive in? Hell, no, it's ugly. And we're coming in from one of the most lucrative areas, coming in, and, you know, got a mangy cougar in Aransas Pass that looks very tired. And we're not. We're not. We're not.
So, if there's any more citizens comments before we close up for... And now, if I'll get down to the end, the German, or... Do you agree?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.